We've got a couple of things here that are going on that is of interest. And I left it on some people's chairs. The Lake Hopaccon Foundation, as you, if you've not heard about this already, show us. They, we have four more hours essentially to vote for the Lake Hopaccon Foundation for their grants. I hope you've been going out and voting. Right now, we're 800 votes behind some little lake up in New York State, Lake George, something like that. Lake George, something like that. So if you have the opportunity, please go on and vote for Lake Hopaccon. We've gotten 34,000 people over the last 10 days to vote on this, so that's pretty good. Also, I left on the table there for anybody who's interested, on March 31st, we're having a, actually, it's Habitat for Humanity is having a neighborhood meeting. It's really for the neighborhoods behind Main Street where the old DPW is, between St. Teresa's and Lincoln Roosevelt. But if you're interested to go out and learn about this great project, they're putting in 12 for-sale units on the old DPW facility on Main Street. There's a flyer there, "Architecturally Outstanding Habitat for Humanity is Ownership." Again, there's a brochure. This is a very exciting event for the township. We want to address as many of the residents' concerns as we can as well, too. Also, JCPenel, Michael Brent, he stopped by my office, he's our regional rep the other day. They're going to be investing, they're going to be investing several million dollars in projects in Morris County. They include the Mount Arlington substation, which serves a lot of Landfill residents, and, wait for it, the Kenville substation, which services a lot of the Sacoasana area that has been one of their more problematic substations that this council's been pushing for, for a number of years for them to upgrade. You may want to actually have Mike come in and go over it in more detail at an upcoming meeting. And then, do you want me to go over the?
Yeah, let's go ahead and we'll do that. We're going to get an update from Mr. Rass on the, on the groundwater.
As we, as we normally do-
I'm opening up on the public, I'd like to get his input and also Mr. Rass.
As we normally do, before the start of the public session, we give an update on the Fenimore. Conti is back on the site. They are working on cap and drainage work. This is from NJDEP, from Ed Putnam. There's been some other issues to be addressed. Let's see here. Okay. The oxidizer is operating, they have not fully incorporated into their system yet. The new oxidizer is operating, but it's not fully incorporated into their system. However, as you know, they had the other oxidizers working, so it's essentially status quo until they get that fully operational. They've received over the past 15, 14, 14 days, a total of 19 calls on various odor complaints. Not just rotten eggs, but they've gotten garbage smells, vegetable matter, things of that nature as well, too. So they've gotten 19 on that. The groundwater testing, we've been talking about that. Again, it's scheduled for next week. This is, they've got the five perimeter wells, they'll be going in and doing their groundwater testing. So that will be next week. The stack tests will be performed two to three weeks after the oxidizer is fully operational. So they'll be doing a stack test at that time. Okay, so that's it from Mr. Putnam. There were some questions last meeting in regards to the electrical and AC to the units. Mr. Groves from Emlicot, his staff went back out and inspected every unit. There is no requirement for hardwiring of the units, and he gave me the data as well, too. So there's no requirement for that. In fact, he noted that they can actually run these off of batteries should they need to do so. But in, but moving along on that with the concerns that were raised, they have voltage regulators and line conditioners in every single one of the units at this time. So they're doing that. They went out and they did a, an inspection on all the units, and all electrical apparatuses, both inside the box, was inspected and re-secured as needed. The electrical lines powering each box were inspected as noted. They did handheld samplings with their handheld meters. They were within the acceptable range for the instruments. And they did, lastly, they switched out the Jerome unit in Roxbury 11, and Rox 11 was a unit that had returned from factory calibration. So they did trade out, they did trade out that unit as well, too. So we have this information on their operating AC power generator and some of the conditions there. I'll go ahead and put that on the website as well, too, for everybody's edification. Going to that. There was, I know this has come up before, and I understand that there's actually a YouTube video of the presentation that was made to the Environmental Commission.
There's a link on our site if I'm-
Well, we haven't done that yet, but-
There will be a link on our site.
I wanted to make sure council was okay that we would be putting a link to that video on our site, so that any resident at any given time could go and look at that presentation. So it would be on the site, and you could look at the presentation, it would be available for them at their convenience.
I think it's a good idea.
And also, lastly, I have some very good news. I got a letter today from Margaret Nordstrom with the Highlands Council, and the Highlands Council has formed a committee to work with the township on potential impacts of the water resources at Fenimore landfill. And they've also identified, as council may be aware, in 2013, under our Conformance Plan, we appropriated money for stream corridor testing, and that stream corridor, that funds can be used, it's $35,000 as forms of grant, to continue to do stream corridor testing along the Ledgewood Basin and that area. As I've said all along, the, we should, we've got the information from the Raritans, that's one set of information. We'll be getting additional information from the groundwater sampling that the DEP will be doing.
We're getting a region, lab results from them.
Yeah, we'll get the labs results, they'll be doing that in the next week. We'll get the lab results from them. One of the things, before it comes out, I need to find out when we're going to get those lab results, okay? So I need to get that question answered. I've got to ask it, then get that question answered. And then we'll have more information along with funding in order to do some of our own testing as we go forward. So I think this is, I think this is very good news from them. And with that, that's all I have for tonight.
Before this goes, Mr. Rass, did you hear something?
Yeah, I'm very gratified to hear this, and that we'll be able to do some of the testing that residents have asked us to do. What's interesting is this comes from actions that the town took back in 2013, when we applied for a water protection, a water protection grant. So this came through in an absolutely timely way for us, and will be put to good use. Thank you, Mr. Rass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I really want to report is the status of the DEP's appeal of the appellate division. Do you not hear me? Is that better? The only thing that I have to report is that there was a result in the appeal that the DEP took of the appellate division's holding that the Legacy Landfill Act, while constitutional, was inappropriately applied when they actually took over the site. In short, the Supreme Court upheld the appellate division. So the import of that is that they confirmed that the act itself is constitutional, and that act still continues to go on. But they did support the appellate division that now requires the DEP to go back to the trial court and establish the basis by which they went onto that site, but not using historical data, but as of the day that they took over the site.
And your opinion, I agree with that?
That is correct. I, at least the representations made by the DEP is that they believe that they have the factual basis to support the conclusion, that they had every reasonable basis under that Legacy Landfill Act to be there and actually take the actions that they took.
Okay, great. Thank you. Before anybody for the Mr. Mayor, you want to? Okay, you can, we have public portion, a three-minute appearance. Please respect that, and everyone will get, who cares to speak will speak. So anyone who'd like to speak, Bob?
Gentlemen, Bob Maderos, Four-Nine Drive, Lexington, New Jersey. Thank you, Mr. Rass, for addressing the questions that I emailed you on, but I did pick up a few more questions. As far as the testing on, on the landfill, what are they going to test for? That's my first question. My, the DEP, that is. My second question is, the RHA presentation video that you're going to put on the website, is that going to be for the record?
Is it for you?
Is it, is it on the record? Is it on the town?
It's on the website.
It's on the website, so it's, it's a record document, then?
It's there.
It's there, where you look at.
Okay, you said, missing a good presentation, gentlemen, but if you'd rather see it on the website, go, go for it.
Well, we'll be able to reach more people that way, too.
Oh, I intended on giving you a video if they presented it to, to the town council. I, I wanted you guys to glorify it, not, not look down on it. My question to the electrical connections, that means that the monitors are reading correctly, correct?
For Bob?
And all the spikes are actual, correct?
Actually, there were numerous reasons, and that's on the website, for the spikes, okay? And that's posted already.
Okay, the pamphlet I read the last time was for loose connections.
That was one of, that was one of the reasons.
One of the incidents, and a loose connection comes from an extension cord. And if you have a loose connection on an extension cord, you're going to trip the breaker. And plus, they don't even have it on a GFI breaker, so it's a code violation to begin with. So they can't tell me that it's hooked up correctly. All right? But my point is that the monitors are working, and the spikes that they're reading for 100 to 2,000 for an hour or so are actual spikes. And this is, you can only have one or the other, not both.
Actually, if you go back on the website, and I did not make copies of it, I give up far more information on that. As you are aware, we have a protocol in place, and I'm going to use the Jefferson School as the last example, because that was the last big spike. We did have a spike on six. I actually physically drove up there myself, from here, was in there within just a short period of five minutes. Smelled no odor, so I'll use that as a better example. I smelled no odor. They had a second monitor at the location, because that's one of the locations, we have a dual monitor. One was reading 200 parts per billion for half a second, the other one was reading six parts per billion at that time. So that's the redundancy that we have in the systems. The other thing we do is we send people out, either Emlicot or people from the landfill, go down with their handhelds and test them as well, too, for redundancy.
Chris, I, I commend you for all those protocols. I'm only specifying one fact, one fact only, that the spikes are actual.
Well, again, if you look at, you have two monitors, one had a spike, the other one did not. So which one?
Okay, the one that had the spike is the accurate one.
Well, that's your opinion.
It, it picked up, it picked it up. The other didn't.
I will continue to pursue this with our, with Emlicot.
I appreciate it. And third, but not least, third but not least, I, I was listening, I wasn't talking. My three minutes, I still have one. Third but not least, what chemicals are being tested by the DEP? Are they going to test for the 60 drums that are buried underneath the ground up there with oil, red chemicals from, from a cleaning outfit? There's 60 drums, that I have a document that the DEP knows about, and they buried. And it's leaching into the water system as we speak. The drums' elasticity is approximately 30 years, and they start leaking. They deteriorate within 40 years. The red dye that we're seeing coming down the stream is a red cleaning solution from a cleaner's. I have a document, if you need it, I'll copy it to you.
Please do.
There's also an additional 1,500 drums that are buried in the landfill. And I won't give you a document on that, I'm saving that one.
Anything you can give us, Bob. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to comment, because, I'm not going to speculate, because obviously, everybody wants their three minutes.
Pass it on to Chris and-
So I'll make notes and try to get back with you.
Can you find out from the DEP whether they're going to test for those chemicals? And they have the documents.
If you give me the documents, I'll-
I'll email you the document and the employer from the DEP that wrote it and still working for the DEP.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? Yes, ma'am. Any name and address, please?
Laurel Whitney, Seven Longfellow in Sacoasana. Mr. Rass, in speaking-
If you speak a little bit closer into the microphone.
Can we lower the mic? We have to lower them, just a little.
Regarding the, the trial that you said the DEP needs to go back to square one, basically, and declare cause for taking over that property. If, I, I know you said they're pretty confident that they can do that, if in fact that does not happen, if the court says, no, you cannot take over that property, what would that mean?
I don't want to speculate as to that right now, but that would be a very difficult posture because of the actual physical undertaking that the DEP is taking as to that property. The remediation, at least as they see fit, is substantially underway and going towards a final phase, so I think that practically, that result would be almost impossible, but I, I don't want to speculate right now. I haven't seen any of the pleadings at this point in time, what the county is actually going to be saying. The representation is that they believe that they're going to be sustained ultimately, and they have other avenues of relief as well. The DEP has committed to say that they are not forbidden at site over in condition, even though the property owner wants them to, so they're fighting that as well.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, looking for some sort of plan B. If this does happen, what would be, what would be the township's action and so forth? And how does that current ruling affect the current litigation that the township is in regarding this?
The township's in a bunch of different litigations right now. That particular litigation, the township doesn't really have a specific interest in because that's really the DEP standing under that law, under that Legacy Landfill Act as against the property owner in taking it over. The township's litigations right now, it doesn't have a direct impact on, because we have things like nuisance that we, you know, have sued under, looking for damages under that as well for good cause. We have federal actions that are pending as well. And they're not directly related to that specific Legacy Landfill Act. And it's a complicated matter, I'm not going to lie, because there are so many different costs at, at work in the litigation aspect to it. Again, but it is in litigation, I'm sure that the township council will at some point be paying very close attention to it, because that decision just came out recently, relatively recently. And as that moves ahead, I think that we're going to be monitoring that very closely and making sure that the township's protected as best as it can be.
Do you have any idea of the timing of that trial?
I don't. I would be absolutely just reaching into the air to try and tell you.
So weeks, months, years?
I don't know exactly, the judge is probably going to have to schedule the parties that come in and actually talk about scheduling, and I don't believe that that has happened yet. But I don't even know that for a fact, so I don't want to speculate.
And the, the tax default, that-
That's another litigation.
Is that, is that coming next month? Is that the?
No, there's no pending hearings on the, on the tax issues.
Is the township going to take any, any action?
No, no, at this time, we're not taking any action. There's no pending, there's no pending lawsuits or no pending hearings scheduled on that. The only thing that would be pending would be file for another appeal by April 4th. The last appeal, the last appeal in 14, 13 had to be withdrawn because he did not provide the information in timely fashion.
Okay, but as of now, you don't have the appeal from him?
There's no, yeah, there's, there's no appeal at this moment.
Counselor, the rule?
You need to understand, they didn't revoke the Legacy Landfill law. They're not proceeding what they did, is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rass, but they, they says the parameters by which NJDEP-
Yes, I understand.
Took this over. And I, I know for a fact it's, it's a parameter in the 30 parts per billion. So maybe on that day that they took it over, it wasn't reading 30 parts per billion. But we all know, prior to, leading up to that, it was, it was rising from 70, I think it was up to 180 at that time. So maybe on that day, but the law itself is, is not being questioned.
But did you say they were not able to use historical data?
Yeah, the, the, the Supreme Court basically affirmed the appellate division, saying that you can't apply retroactively, you can't have a retroactive application. So they're really going to be, again, and I don't want to speak for the DEP. The DEP's position, they're the ones that are standing, they're the party in the action. I don't want to speak for them. This is simply why I understated, is that they, the Supreme Court basically said, yeah, you can't use retroactive penalization for it, it has to be, at the time that you're taking it over, that there was the urgency to the action.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just, we, so often we can't, we can't say things because of the litigation. On this point, I want to be absolutely clear. I can't imagine, I can't fathom a scenario where we would sit still while SEP would come back and take over the landfill. Under no condition would I support that happen.
Nobody does.
Nobody does.
100%.
Kathy Hart, 12th Summit Lane, Sacoasana. I had a couple of questions about the monitoring, too, with the, with the elevations when there's a spike. Do you have a protocol stating how quickly a response, the response time, so it's, it's checked by Emlicot or somebody else with an additional monitor?
Well, it would be, when it is in a close proximity of the landfill, they can get out there fairly quickly, that's the handex people. The police department or anybody who's available will go out immediately to smell if there's an odor.
But they won't have a monitor themselves?
No, but when you're seeing a spike of 1,000, you're going to smell.
Well, that was my other question, is I've been reading that there could possibly be other gases that caused the spike, because, you know, I've questioned before, and we've been told that when there isn't a spike, it wasn't actual, it wasn't hydrogen sulfide. So my question is, do you have monitors when they go out there to check, do they also read for other gases which could be toxic that are, you know, could possibly be elevated?
I tell you what, if you could provide me some of the other gases, if you want to email those to me?
I know sulfur dioxide, and then Aaron said something about mercaptins, which I'm not-
Well, the mercaptins, the mercaptins-
Not familiar with personally.
Yeah, the mercaptins, the DEP addressed that, and I think that is on our website. The SO2, if you talk about the SO2, they have SO2 monitors in place. And if you go to the website and you go to the live, you can see the SO2 monitors as well, too.
Well, what I'm saying is, when you go to check out these spikes, and you're saying that it's not hydrogen sulfide, first of all, smelling it, probably everybody in town has olfactory fatigue from hydrogen sulfide, because we're exposed to low levels of it for an extended period of time now. But even, you know, I'll take you at your word that that level would, even, even if you have an issue, you would, you would smell it. So my concern is that it's some other gas that is causing it, and are there monitors, I mean, this is what we need you to check with Emlicot, are there monitors that they can bring in, so that they're not just saying, this monitor confirms that it's not hydrogen sulfide, we don't need to know what it's not, we need to know what it is.
Okay, I, again, I will ask them, if you had some specifics, it would be better. I want to talk about the olfactory fatigue statement that you made, that when, I believe it was three weeks ago, when the system went down for a short period of time, and it read 24 parts per billion, there were tens of complaints. So people, obviously, even at 24 parts per billion, were still able to detect it.
Right, so then that really suggests that there is likely another gas that is causing these monitors to spike, because either they're really no good monitors if they keep spiking for no good reason, or there's some other factors that are causing them to, and things, you know, for me, my point of view from this whole thing is, we know about hydrogen sulfide, that it's a toxic gas, and we know that it was there because it has an odor. Not every toxic gas produces an odor. So there could be other toxic gases that we don't know we're being exposed to, that don't have an odor and are spiking. You know, I think if Emlicot could-
Well, you know what I'll do? We've produced information before on this, on these questions, over the years. Let me go through the website, and at the next meeting, if not in advance of that, I'll have the information out on the dials. Because we really have, these questions have come up, and we've gone over this, and we'll continue to do that, and maybe what we need to do is put it in a location that's really succinct and easy, and then available to the folks.
But you don't know if, when Emlicot goes there, that their monitor doesn't just read hydrogen sulfide levels, does it read other gas levels? That's kind of, that's really-
I believe at this time, it's reading H2S, but I'll confirm that.
Mr. Rass will find out that. He can go to Emlicot, find out, we'll give you the information. In fact, if you call, he can give you the information.
Okay, and then just one other quick question with the Raritan headwaters thing. You said you're putting it online, but why haven't you invited them here? Because if you have a dialogue with somebody, isn't-
There's no reason to have a dialogue at this point in time. The DEP is going to be testing the water samples, and we will get the results of that. And from there, we have funds available to do our own testing, and we want to do that and have our information. If we'll be considering, how can somebody else come in? What does he ask you to question? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have anything?
Frank Parry, Lookout.
Good evening.
I, I just want to say, you know, all this focus on the smell, it, it's really the wrong focus. For me personally, I mean, or, or like the Jefferson moms on March 9th, they called because there was very high readings on the monitors, and they were right to do so. It didn't matter that they didn't smell it. They were concerned about their children, and they should be. And honestly, like if Shannon Cacabella says her whole family has woken up at 4:15 in the morning by the stench, you know, I, I believe her. And I don't have to run down the hill and check to see if I smell it or not. I mean, adults who are suffering, and adults who have children that are suffering, that should be taken seriously, period. And honestly, you know, I, I don't care if it smells like butterflies and fairies and mom's apple pie up there on that mountain. It doesn't matter. I'm still going to be here, and I'm still going to be talking about this, and I'm still going to be spreading the word about this, because of all the real problems that are here. And that list is very long, and we all know what it is. We don't know what's buried there, we don't know what's coming out of that stick, we don't know how polluted our water is, on and on and on and on. We could go on for days and days and days about that. With the stack testing and the groundwater testing, I'm concerned also, you know, you're not going to find what you're not testing for. And I mean, the EPA, right in the very beginning, wanted to test for non-methane organic compounds, NMOCs, and that was never done. We know there was high formaldehyde, we know there was high methane, at least at one time. We know all of this stuff is going on. We know there's problem after problem. In terms of the tax appeal, I really wasn't following all that was said. The town isn't going to consider foreclosing because of litigation, or will they consider foreclosing in the future?
Well, you said the future. Let's address the question at hand. With all of litigation, absolutely not.
You can't, in terms of lawsuits going on. So once, if SEP wins the property back, or basically they still own the property-
Then they got a big tax bill.
Correct. And then, will the town consider foreclosing?
We, we, we're looking at all of our options.
All right, because to me, it's like, you know what, I, I can't root for the DEP in this situation. They've been wrong from the day, from day one, from the word go. And they should be held accountable for that. And I don't know what that means, and I don't know how, what will happen to this, you know? Hopefully, they'll be found liable and compensate Bernard for whatever loss he has, I'm not a fan of his either. Hopefully, they can compensate the town for losses, too, including trucking that stuff out of here. Because everybody agrees, and has said publicly, including our illustrious governor, that this never should have happened. And that's right. And we here are on the side of right. And I'll be here smell, no smell, spikes, no spikes. And I would ask that the town follow its protocols. I mean, issue the alerts. You know, if it turns out that the readings are false, there's some reason that, you know, there was nothing to get upset about, don't you think that the people in town are going to learn over time that, you know, oh, it's another alert? Maybe we shouldn't take this seriously? Or maybe we should? I mean, people going out to sniff, people going out to check, maybe, maybe not, a truck, a power plant, a this, a that. It's building distrust, it's generating distrust. It would be better to issue the alert, alert after alert after alert after alert. And then have somebody, tell us it wasn't right, tell us it's this, tell us it's that. And then we'll start to make our own decisions. And maybe we'll all start to say, okay, it really was nothing. Or maybe we don't have to take this so seriously.
Okay, thank you very much.
But the way it's going, it's generating distrust.
We'll look into it. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have anything to say? No one else say
Wait, wait, wait. Got a couple more. I'm going to go too.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Pezzak, I did that 37 M and zero. And I'm listening to all of these things for a long time. And I've made a few comments on a couple of different occasions. And sometimes maybe my emotions get the better of me, but there's good reason for it. And I could sit here and, and spew, you know, superfluous reasons like this, this woman just did. And I thought, when this whole thing started, we were, we were all together. And it does seem to me, from my, my perspective, that, that there's a dichotomy here. That just because of the way the government works, that you have to be on the side of the DEP. And it's hard to watch, it's hard to watch. Because I watched a video last week, I'm looking and watching people's body language. And I think that you don't, certain things that are said, that you don't even believe what you want us to believe. And, you know, I understand why, but it's hard to watch. And, and I saw people fighting amongst each other here. And that's what I talked about the first time I stood up here, that this is breaking down who we are. You know, someone standing up here saying things shows that they care. They're not up here saying things because they want to berate people and engage in an effective diatribe. They, they want to help. Everybody wants to help. If they're here, and they're getting up here, and they're struggling for words and things to say, they're doing it for the right reason. And, you know, it, it, it's just hard for me to watch, it really is. Because I love this town too, but I really don't like what happened to it. And I think that we can change it if, if we, if we do the right thing. And I, I really think, from the time I was in the courtroom, and I was asked by Peggy from, from the Daily Record, what was happening, I'm like, this is just going to get worse. It's gonna, these problems are going to compound exponentially. And, and it's, I don't know, you know, it's hard to watch. I've seen people up here with their spirits broken, with young children. And, you know, they, they walk away from here, and they go home, and, and they're suffering. You know, psychological ramifications of this, or, you know, you can't, there's no, there's, there's no, you know, compensatory damages that you could even get back what was taken from us as a community. I mean, there is the economic and social injustices that, that have defiled our township, they're on everybody. They're on everybody. And we shouldn't be fighting about it. We should be looking to make ourselves whole.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anyone else who wants to speak? Something else?
First, I'd like to apologize for those messages I sent yesterday. My grammar was poor, my punctuation was lousy, and all those things. It's, technically, I shouldn't have any excuse, but there is an excuse because of myself running back and forth between Roxbury and Dover with my family who are sick. So I wanted to bring that up because, to be honest with you, I got in a lot of trouble with the boss at home. She said, why didn't you let me read this first? But anyway, I wanted to say that. First, before I even get into that, I want to ask, Mr. Rass, and I don't want to quote you wrong, did you say that the way those meters, those Jerome meters are hooked up are correct?
I wrote a report, an email from our vendor who said yes, they've gone out and inspected it.
So you're, 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 you're telling, they're telling you that, and I said this a couple of meetings ago, the manual that's on there, the way it talks about a real good ground, and how all the power is supposed to be hooked up, is correct?
You know what I'll do, Carl, like I said, is I will post the information they provided us from the manual itself. If you want to take a look at it and then have questions on that, and they'll email those to me. I'll be glad to get those answered, because I can't answer those questions. But I'm going to be quiet because it takes away from your three minutes.
That's fine, I'll speak back again. It, it, a month ago or so, I brought that manual, and I spoke, we spoke about the grounds and how they're done. And at that time, I was told, we'll check on it. I think there's a manual that shows how it's supposed to be hooked up. And not only that, but that, that 363 sensor, they like.
Again, they have indicated they're installed correctly. But again, I'm not going to get into it because it takes time away from you.
Okay, now, the other thing is, and I can't go through all those emails I had, but the one that I've come up, I've talked about several times, or not with this group, but, and I take issue with saying that we don't want to hear from the headwaters. They're the people that know better than you guys and you're experts. So to say I don't want to see that is wrong.
That was not what was said.
You're saying you don't want to do it.
What was said is, first of all, their report is a video that's going to be on the website. Secondly, we are going to review the results from the DEP's water testing. We are also going to have testing done based on the grant that we have from Highlands Commission. At that time, we would make a decision whether we would move forward or not. And that's what I said, I did not say, I did say that they would not be coming in here today.
Today, that's correct, but, but
The door was not shut on it.
Okay, that's fine, but one of these people back here said that, you guys, we don't believe, we can't trust the DEP. And I don't know if you guys are going to say yes or no, but not one person here trusts the DEP. So they can go out and do tests, and you know what they're going to say, instead of being moderate? Oh, the water's wonderful. So I have a problem with that.
When the DEP does testing, they're not the ones that are putting it, they're not the laboratory. They're going to do the testing, take the samples, and they give it to a lab, such as Garden State Lab. I don't know if that's where they go.
Well, well, hold on one second, myself and Mr. Penetares
What are they going to test for?
We, we did those tests, we were checked out with those tests. And I know that the DEP is doing it right. So, but there's something else I want to go on.
I can't answer that.
Those emails that I sent, there was one particular one where I came up with, the second one I'll talk about first. And that is, that how about all of you guys, including you
Sir?
We go down to the Brook where we've had the measurements, and how about we don't drink the water? How about we do that? Anybody have any problem with doing that?
We're not going to make a comment, Carl.
Wait, 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 excuse me, Mr. Mayor. What's wrong with asking that question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, excuse me.
You were here for the RHA presentation, Carl.
I heard it twice, three times.
One of the things, one of the things that the fellow from Garden State Testing said, any surface water in New Jersey, he wouldn't taste. So you're asking us to do something that's ridiculous.
Oh, excuse me, sir, it's not ridiculous.
I wouldn't drink that water.
Wait, wait, hold on.
It's saying that I wouldn't drink Lake Capcom.
Wait, wait, hold on, it's headwaters, it's supposed to be pristine. Thank you.
Any surface water, Carl?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I'll be back on the next line.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say? Yes, Paul.
Bob Schultz, Randolph. Do you know the status of the meeting that you had asked for?
I'm sorry, can you say it?
Say again? Oh, you can't, sorry, I'll go. What was the status of the meeting with the DEP that Fred had asked for last meeting? Did anything happen?
Well, let me tell you, we were supposed to meet last Friday, and with the snowstorm, they canceled that. So tried to reschedule it, got an interesting email back from the DEP, so I had to go to another source. And we're going to try to get that rescheduled. They, they wanted us to go through certain protocols. It's going to happen, it just, it's going to be a couple of days down the line.
So sometime hopefully before the next meeting?
I'm hoping by, hopefully by the end of this week, but it was scheduled for last Friday, but with the snowstorm, they, they said no. And then I followed up right then for another one, so did Mr. Rass, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping this week.
It's going to happen.
I'm hoping this week.
Thank you. And so, for the, for the council, you guys do not want the RHA in here? That's, you want everybody to just watch the video that I created.
At this point in time, the videos are available for you to look at. And that takes, gives you the information that you would like at this point in time.
Right.
So to Mr. Penetares, we are going to look at the DEP's test results, and we are going to be performing the test. At that point in time, you can take a look at it and see if there's any value to having them in here. So I said before, and I've said twice, the door is not closed on that. Yes.
Have you watched the video?
Have I watched it? No.
Has everybody?
But I've read the report.
Well, the, the report and the video are two different things. I mean, he really explains what's going on, and if you're asking the public to watch the video, I would expect that you guys would want to watch the video as well.
I would want to watch it, but have I watched it at this point in time? No, but I have read the report in its entirety.
It's, it's not that long, it's only 15, 20 minutes. And you said you were going to post the link there, did you ask permission of the owner of that video?
Yeah.
I said, did you ask permission of the owner of that video? If you're a little Lincoln?
I understand it's, it's, it's on YouTube, I understand it was a video of a public meeting.
Right, but there's an owner to the video, I mean, I mean, that's
It's in the public domain. It's, yeah, it's in the public domain.
When you post something in the public domain, you lose rights to it because you've now posted to the entire public.
So that means like all Chris Christie's videos are just public domain as well? On YouTube?
I don't think they get replayed back on the news.
Good point.
One more question, Bob.
I'm going back to what a, what a few of the other people said. During, during Bill Kibler's report to the Environmental Commission, he asked the question of, what the heck are we going to test for? Because there's so many different tests out there for different chemicals, that it would cost him $100,000 worth of testing to test for everything. So what is the DEP going to test for? What are you guys going to test for? How are you going to know of what to test for? And those monitoring wells in the streams and everywhere else? Because as we know, what happened with Combeville North, all of a sudden, they started testing for some new chemicals. And lo and behold, 20 years later, there's chemicals leaching into the groundwater, which got into the people's wells, and now they're, they're contaminated. And the DEP is going to spend a million dollars to hook up water to one single person that it's hit so far.
Yeah, as Mr. Kibler said, we all agree that everything should be tested for, but we don't know what to test for.
Right.
Just like you said, and I agree with you. We're going to take a list of the, we're talking to Harvey right now, and finding a list of most potential, what's potentially the most common in that area.
Who's Harvey, sorry, I don't, I don't know who Harvey is.
Garden State Water Testing.
Okay.
Okay, he's our expert. He tends to know more than we, certainly than we know about this. We're going to start doing my process elimination. We're going to test the first, I don't know how many, 30, 40, whatever the number is that we decide on, they'll test for those. And they'll, if those are eliminated, they'll test for the next batch. We're going to work our way down, Bob.
And my, my only comment on that, Bob, is that, you know, it's not $100,000, but you have $35,000 in funds to do that.
Yeah, I don't know how much it is, I'm just, it's a substantial amount of money.
Well, we have, we have funds now, you know, that are available to us. We also have, we also have assistance in the Highlands. We have assistance of the Highlands Council's work to do on this, so that's, that's good as well.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, that's a proper portion at this time. Let's see, matters requested by, not with all of them.
Carl? I'd like to go back to what I asked before. Mr. Schmidt, you, when I said about drinking the water that's headwaters, that's supposed to be pristine waters, that goes down, and 1.5 million people drink that water.
No, I understand.
And I, I understand, let me just finish, okay? And I said, well, let's go up and drink that water. I said in my email, I don't drink it, but maybe you as a council and DEP guys, whatever else, and I'm willing to go with you to drink that water, it's supposed to be pristine.
Let me clarify, let me, my understanding, you wanted us to go up to the Ledgewood
Where we did the testing.
Right, and drink the water up there. And all I said to you is that the guy from Eastern
Garden State.
Garden State, said, basically said to us, any surface water, he would never drink.
From any location.
From any location, it doesn't matter, Carl, that's all I said.
But, but, but wait a second.
And he's the expert, not me.
Oh, I know he's the expert, but you know who the experts really are, is the Highlands. He cares about the water. There's no fish in there anymore, right? So if that's the case, and that water, wait, wait, that water goes downstream. Okay, go ahead, say what you're going to say.
You're diverging, is it just a simple question?
I'm not diverging.
Did I drink the water? The answer is no, I would not drink it.
Okay, so you want to
Because I've been told by that expert not to drink any surface water.
But people downstream, because it's going downstream, are drinking that water, but we won't, right?
But they go through a process of, whatever they go through, we get that water drinkable.
Okay, I got one other suggestion. I don't know about you guys, but when we were kids, I grew up in Dover, we'd go in the Rockaway River, right? Drink the water there, get in our mouths, kids play in that water. Kids drink that water by accident or on purpose. Are you guys going to tell them not to drink that water anymore? If you don't want to try it, then you're going to tell the kids not to drink it either. If you wouldn't drink that water, am I being unfair by saying this?
I'm just not following you, Carl.
The kids go into that stream, I see kids in my backyard, because I got the Raritan Brook running back there, or whatever that Brook is called, and kids go in there, they get wet, they drink the water, they go swimming in it. Now, you won't go drink it, and neither will I, because I know it's polluted. So that means then, we have to tell the kids, don't drink the water, don't go in there.
It'll save you harm in swimming in it, Carl.
Fine, it goes into your skin too.
Might I suggest, you, the points you're raising are some of the additional testing and whatnot can be done in the township. Because the tests, and I don't want to, I don't want to take your time. So it's additional tests, additional information that we get from testing.
Isn't it a fact true that the kids can go in and walk in that water, the kids can go in there and drink that water? And if we don't want to drink it, why should they be in it?
That would apply to every water body in, in, in New Jersey.
That's correct.
Like Capcom, or Shu Lake.
But we're not talking, we're not talking about every other one.
I'd advise drinking it in the
We're not talking about them, we're talking about New Jersey headwaters, which is this. So, I mean, if you guys don't want to do it, and you guys don't want to say anything about the kids, and you don't want, if they can still go in there, that's fine. I just want to under-record that kids can still go in there and kids can still drink. What are you going to do?
Drinking that water is ridiculous, Carl.
Okay, fine, then you're going to have to keep the kids out of it. Now, one other thing I'd like to know, Mr. Rass, and the things that I don't get a chance to talk to you about tonight, I'll retype those messages, because I'm not going to bring up the one tonight, tonight, because I don't want to waste my time about putting out a group that smells and stuff, and so they're right there, you know, they, they, like a stakeout looking for a crook. We'll talk about that another time. But my major concern is, because my family is sick, and I'm not living in Dover, in Roxbury, I'm in Dover. I would like to be I would like to be compensated by the town of Roxbury in some way. I'm paying, played two places, and I, it's fortunate for me that it's my mother's house, but I had to take Kathy out of town. And the numbers that we're coming up with, saying that twenty's okay, or fifteen's okay, or thirty's the limit, I can tell you the God's honest truth, as soon as we pull into my driveway, Kathy's not there fifteen minutes, and she's pounding headache, she's got vertigo, and the whole nine yards. Now, you guys, DEP included, can scream and yell and say, there's no problem, there's no problem, there's no problem. I beg pardon. There's a problem. So I would like you guys to consider, and put it on the record, that I get some kind of compensation, because I'm running back and forth. You guys could say, I don't have to do that. However, I have to do that. My wife and, and my youngest one is sick.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Well, uh...
You're like the youngest in the year. You're rude. You're very rude. Thank you, Carl, that's like you don't care.
That's beside the point. I do care.
I cry.
Fine, you do care.
Thank you, Carl.
Well, I'm asking you guys to consider that. And then when I hear from you, next meeting?
Thank you, Carl.
You didn't answer my question?
When next week?
Okay, two weeks.
Hi. Laurel Whitney again, Southern Mall, Fellow Drive. I'm going to go back to the process on deciding what chemicals or elements are being tested. It was mentioned, I believe, by Mr. Schmidt, that you're going to take the recommendation of Garden State Labs as to what to test.
No, they, they provide the test results that the DEP has provided.
No, no, no. Roxbury's testing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he, he said before that he's going to talk to the lab and test for the most fifty or sixty...
Okay, I understand.
...highest potential chemicals to be found there. I think it might be a better idea to have some sort of independent body make that decision. You wouldn't go to ShopRite and say to ShopRite, what should I buy? They're going to tell you to buy the most profitable, um, or items. Not necessarily the items you need, or, you know, you're, you can't ask a private business to make that kind of recommendation. I think that we need some sort of independent source, possibly somebody from the Highlands or, or the Raritan Headwater, somebody that might know better.
Mr. Ratz, I'd like you to look at it.
There's more to this, though.
Yeah, there's more. Three things. The first thing is, is that we, we need to get, as asked, is we need to get what the DEP's testing for, and their groundwater testing. And we need to get that to our experts, which would include Bob Zelli and, and Harvey Klein. Second, there are what's called batteries of tests. And they are, they can range from ten tests, twenty tests, whatever the conditions might, might be in the area. And that would determine what battery of tests that would be tested for. Mr. Klein doesn't make a profit on suggesting to us necessarily the test in each individual test. Okay? That, that's not necessarily, he's not going to give us just the most expensive test. The third thing is really...
There's an issue of profit, not necessarily most expensive.
No.
Some tests, some tests are more less.
Sure, but he's not, but he, he's been in the business, and his father was in the business long before that. So he, he does well on the testing. The third thing, and the most important thing, is as we read tonight, the Highlands Council is going to not only assist us with funding, but with advice as well too, on the type of testing. So I think that really goes to your question at hand.
Yes, that's, that just contradicts what was, what was said before, which concerns private entities.
No, I, I, I don't, because, no, I don't think so, because they'll probably contact a laboratory, such as Harvey Klein, to get their advice as well too. That's, that's, you know, when you have the experts, that's, you want to get their advice as well.
Oh, I'm, I'm all for collaboration.
So that's what you're looking at.
To just ask the lab, that, that concern a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Nemri. I live at Three Canal Street. Do I have the right that you do not test for anything but hydrogen sulfide when you, in the meters?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The meters are, there's two sets of meters, an SO2 and hydrogen sulfide. That is correct. That's the way it's been since we have operated the meters. However, the D O, the DEP on a few occasions has tested through the stacks, or through what they have is a continuous monitor. They can test that as well too, for other chemicals as well too. We, yeah, including VOCs. We, we've posted all of that information on our website.
And how often do they test for any of that?
I don't know when the last time was. I'd have to get back to you, Miss Nemri, on that.
Because there's something going on here. There's spikes. We're sick. Kathy had to move to Dover. I had to move with her. I was away for a week, I was fine. I come back home, my asthma's gone again, my voice is gone again. I don't have my own voice. I have this. Somebody's got to do something. I, we can't keep living like this. I can't keep going to somebody else's house to stay. The weekends, I go to Patterson so that I can get relief. And you want us to trust the DEP? How can we trust the DEP? You tell us, let the DEP handle it. You say, the DEP is doing the testing. You want us to trust the tests that the DEP give us? Look at what the DEP has done to our town. How do we trust them? And how do you expect us to trust them? We can't even get a meeting with the DEP. They cannot see what they have done to us. They do not see that we are sick. They do not see that we are living in other places away from our families. That is what is really going on in Roxbury. We are getting torn apart because of this landfill. And something needs to be done besides going to the DEP because they're not helping us. They're not.
Thank you.
Chris, just a quick, the thirty, the thirty-five thousand dollars that they're going to be giving us as a result of Highland, is that restricted to just water testing? Or can it be used for like air grab samples and other things?
Extreme corridor testing, but we, we'll get back on that.
Can we, we just check to see if we could do a multitude of tests off of that, including air, air samples as well as water samples? And I think what I also heard here is what are the parameters by which the DEP will be doing their tests? So if we can get these people back and get those answers, and find out what the best tests are, and ask the NJDEP to do those in advance, as well as we can use those for our testing, I think we'll go a long ways. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything else? Yes, Bob.
Bob Schultz again. Thank you, Fred. That's something I've been asking for a few months now, is to get some additional air testing, because these aren't actors out here. These are real people that are experiencing real things. And these things didn't exist before what happened up there happened. So we, we know something's going on. We just don't know what it is. And I hope we can get air testing, some air grab samples. And, you know, I know, Chris, you said they'd have a, have a continuous monitor on the, on the stack, but we've never seen any of those results. We've seen the one stack. It's a continuous monitor, which means it's continuously reading. We have the one report that you, that you posted up there, but that was it. That's all we've seen. And that was 2013.
There was one reason.
Wasn't it?
There was one just...
One within the last...
Fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen.
There was one within the last one.
Oh, there was another one?
Yeah. Because I had a question, and the reason I remember that, Bob, is I had a question on...
It may have been February.
It was last...
And how it was done, so I know it was done.
Last month. I'll have to go look, because I didn't, I didn't see it up there. So one, one quick question, then I have a bigger question. Has anybody watched the video from the, from the Raritan Headwaters Association presentation other than Marty, because Marty was there? You did? Anybody else? No?
Yeah.
I would, I would like to make a statement about that. It's been a month and a half since that meeting happened. And it was a pretty powerful presentation in my mind, since this is three years of historical data. And the fact that no one has watched that except for Fred, and that Marty was there is pretty sad.
Well, actually, that would be fall on me, because I only sent them the link to it a few days ago. So that would fall back on them.
No need to apologize for me.
My question is, I feel like a three-part question, so I'll make it really quick. It, it seems that the council's very happy that the New Jersey Highlands Council's coming in, doing, informing the commission, and that they're going to be studying the water. Everybody seemed pretty excited. I was very excited. I was at the Highlands Council that meeting, which was last week. And, and there's a video up there of that as well. And, um, sorry, I kind of want to know, sir. So we would, I would assume that everybody wants the best possible outcome, you know, from that, from that commission, and integrity, and whatever the results are, as we, as we do as well. And out of that entire Highlands Council, the one person who is the, the biggest expert in water is Tracy Carluccio, because she works for the Delaware Water, or Delaware River Water Keepers Association. For some reason, she's not on this commission, and she asked to be on this commission. And I don't know why that is. I'm not in that political thing. But knowing that the council wants the best possible outcome, I would ask the council to send a letter to the Highlands Commission, asking that Tracey be part of this, because she's an independent person, she knows water the best, and she can look at this data and, and give it, you know, as part of the whole thing, you know, an independent review of it, whether it's good or bad. And, you know, I'm certainly rather happy with it and mad, so.
Oh, I, you know, look, the Highlands, the Highlands Council's going to put on the committee who they want to put on the committee. Bob, may, maybe you should raise that with the Highlands Council. They're the decision makers in terms of it.
They are. But I'm saying, if, if the council wants the best possible outcome, she's the best possible person to have on that commission as well. So that's why I'm asking council to draft a letter to send to the Highlands Council. They sent you, you guys a letter about informing the commission and saying, thank you.
Bob, that's a good question. When you were there, did you ask the Council, the Highlands Council, for her to be on it? Did you raise this to them?
We did. And we also, Tracy actually raised that as well, and the council did not respond.
They didn't say a word?
Well, I think we should look into it.
We'll, we'll, we'll make an inquiry. But it's their committee.
Right, it's, it's their committee about, it's their committee about our township and our water and our health. So it is their committee, I agree.
Send it, and you'll hit it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes. That's cool.
Sean Landing. Questions about the alcohol in Port Shu Lake. What prompted that? Maybe I missed it, I'm sorry, but...
It was a little late at the meeting, Sean, but I guess it was about six months ago, we had a vendor who wanted to put together an event. And we do have a policy against no alcohol in the parks. And she was somewhat, you know, we said we'd revisit it, and we went and revisited for, for that individual, so.
I felt that the event didn't function well without them.
Right, they felt? So had, I mean, I heard you, Mayor Benes, you, you guys all think that the functions at the park would, would function better with alcohol?
No, we didn't.
No, we said, no way.
I don't think we said this.
But it's going to be a temporary thing we're going to put together.
Wedding.
Weddings, okay, you bring up weddings. What's preventing ten people from the wedding that break off and go to another sporting event? The cops are on the corners of the driving road, and they're forcing people back to the walking path. Now, who's policing the people at our children's games?
Well, that's a good question.
Not a good question.
It's a good question. All we did tonight was ask them to revisit it in a smaller scale, so we can review that again.
Okay.
Because, because as you just stated, we did not say, at least I didn't hear, that the same amount of police presence and, and things would be needed even for a smaller group. What I stated was that maybe as a, as they start to try this out, it would be to just eliminate it to very small groups. My intention when it actually comes up is to say, the small group would not need to have a permit, because it's so small, because they're not selling the alcohol. But we didn't decide that yet either. That's where I'm kind of going, is I, I'd like to see a little bit of walking before we're running. But your comment of us wanting alcohol, I, I open it, comment to saying, what's the incentive to the town? There is an incentive to allow people and town residents who have weddings, christenings or something, if they wanted to use the park, I do see the incentive for that. Okay? That's a world different than having someone come in with a large organization to, to come in and use the facilities. And that I worry about.
Okay, I'm not trying to take anything away from, you know, people who want to do things like that, but who's going to police the, to make sure it stays in there?
That's our question.
You know, how do they, how do you prevent it from going to the sporting events? And now, you know, ten people broke off from that hundred-person party, there are other sporting events, and now their parents or other people are like, I mean, they're here, why can't I?
I have a lot of faith in the Chief of Police, that when he and, and our Director of Recreation say that they will come up with the correct scenarios, do that and watch it, and on a pilot kind of program when we start off, I have every confidence that they'll come up with a way to go do that. I don't know what that is yet, because we haven't even said we're going to allow them to do it, much less what size it's going to be.
Okay.
And, you know, understand, size is complicated.
Thank you, move on. Great job with the budget. Everybody, that fifty-three dollars in your carriage, is that the word you use, slide, that everyone around here is using? Is that per person or per household?
That's per person.
So a family of four is about two-hundred-and-twelve dollars a month for that. Okay. And my last question is, how, how's the war on the potholes going? Are we, are we winning? Are we losing?
We looked at the right person. We're, I think, I think we...
Are we doing a good job?
We're getting there. Plan opened yesterday, today, actually, so we're going to get hot blacktop. It's a bit of a temporary.
Okay, so the money to fix the potholes, does that come out of our paving budget every year? And is that accounted for?
Yes, two separate, yes, it's accounted for. There's two separate, he's in general operation for asphalt repair and maintenance, which is in his budget. That comes out of that. And then you have the capital budgets, which are the larger items, which are project-specific. Like paving Unimber or something like that. That'd be project-specific. We have three crews working over the last couple of weeks, so. No, I see nothing. Just asking a question.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, just one second. When the Chief of Police and the other gentlemen gave their presentation, which I thought was an excellent presentation, I don't know if you saw me stop and talk to the tall officer. I said to him, why don't you tape that and show it to those people that, that see it? And he goes, because getting one-on-one with them is far better than a tape. So I'm suggesting that the same thing could hold true for headwaters. That's what was said.
Okay, we'll close the portion of the session. And we have a...
Litigation? Middlestat versus County.
Litigation, Middlestat versus the county.
Council of the county of Roxbury, the county of Morris, we are authorized and consented to the county council of the public excluded, where it is deemed appropriate. The county council, the district manager and administrator, without the presence of the public in accordance with the provisions of our municipal and territorial clean being, I mean, the clean sector. Now therefore, be resolved by the county council of Roxbury, that manager and litigation, Middlestat versus the county of Roxbury, shall be discussed in the county council without the presence of the public.
I got you.
Second. If you have a question. Where did it go? Where did it go? You drank that water.
I'm going to drink a quart of spring. Starting with a little scotch and a twang. I can tell the difference. I don't know.
Today. I'm probably going to have water.
Well, I'm sending a guy to bring it back. He's just sitting there, shocked. I said, but he said he had to look at it. No, we'll always see that.
The women are just going to grow.
I can't even get it back to me. Wait, maybe I can. I can take it once, but I don't know.
Like a crate.
Is that it? That's it, right? Yeah.